Okay, the next tabled item is Jiffy Lube located at 1161 and 1171 Ridge Road and 974 Jackson.
That has been changed, so I'll read that one to the record because there's a petition under our variance. Located at 1161 and 1171 Ridge Road and 974 Jackson Road. Guggenheim Development Services LLC is requesting area variances to allow the filing. A lot area of 36,537 square feet and a minimum of 45,000 square feet is required. A nine-foot north side setback for a house at 974 Jackson Road where 20 feet is required. A 1.5-foot south side buffer area where 20 feet is required. A 15-foot east rear buffer area where 25 feet is required. Associated with the construction of a 3,000-square-Jiffy Lube Auto Care Shop. And a proposed .84 acre parcel consisting of SPL numbers 080.13-2-1, 080.13-2-2, and 080.13-2-52. Located in an MC medium intensity commercial district under Section 225-17 of the Code of the Tower of Boston.
Hi, nice to be here again. I'm Betsy Brung with Woods O'Geehan. We were here last month on the application. Mary Marjanowski is here. I'm not going to put her last name.
Mary Marjanowski, this is the record.
So, as the board will recall, when we were here last month, an additional variance was identified. And we presented the application, but it's been re-hubacized and the additional variance was added. We're having to address that. The board also requested a drawing so that you could more clearly identify where the current property lines are located and where the proposed property lines will be. So, if you have any questions about that? We have, hopefully this shows you clearly, that we have four lots currently. One, two, three, four. And we are carving out this piece for the Jiffy Lube project, leaving the owner's remaining property for the timing combined into a single parcel. That could change. I know that he's trying to find users for that property. So, you know, there's no part plan for the remainder of the land. So, what we provided to you that we reviewed last month, we did go through the reasons for the specific variances that we applied for. Again, to remind the board, one being for the lot size of the Jiffy Lube parcel. The second being for the, I guess it's the northernly property line of the house that will remain standing at 974 Jackson Road. And then, we have added buffer variances relative to the location of the dumpster in the corner here. So, it's for the convention on the south and the bent on the east. Oh, sure. Thanks. Yeah, so the additional variance is for the buffer relative to the location of the dumpster. Again, on the south and on the east. I do think that that is the appropriate location on the site for the placement of the dumpster. I don't know that there's any spot that would be preferable. It's a corner lot and this is the best location to keep it away from visibility from the street. You certainly wouldn't want it in the front yard. And we're not near any neighbors. Again, this parcel is zoned medium intensity commercial MC. And the remaining lands are also zoned MC. And then, our neighbors to the south are residential. It's partial on the opposite side of Ridge Road and Jackson Road. So, I think that we meet the requirements for all of the area variances. The board did grant use variance at the last meeting based on this specific proposal. So, I think we've addressed, you know, that it does not change the character of the neighborhood. In respect to the specific variances, the lot size really allows us to have all of the requirements for the Jiffy Lube site plan met. These are the only variances needed. And even though it looks like we have, you know, four items listed, if you really look at what they are, they're really internal to the existing configuration of the property. We're dealing with the existing conditions in the best way possible. And again, preserving the opportunities for the remaining property to be reused in the future. So, I think the lot size is hopefully acceptable to the board. There is no negative, no adverse impact, no detriment on any adjacent property from any of the variances. Not from the lot size, not from the buffer variances, and not from the setback for the remaining house. Those remaining lands are all owned by the same property owner. And if anything, the way that this is laid out is intended to be as protected as possible of the nearby residential neighborhood. We'd be happy to answer any questions or provide you with any additional information.
Thank you.
Where is the lot area of Lot Number Two? The proposed lot.
The remain, the total of that?
Yes.
So, the proposed area of Lot Two would be 88,926 square feet. And that's the whole remainder of everything with the Jiffy Lube parcel. And that parcel at the corner of Ridge and Jackson today is just over only 18,000 square feet. So, we're pretty much doubling that. It's still obviously not conforming, but it's a lot better than it exists today.
Well, I would think that because Lot Number Two is located in MC area, you're establishing there's a lot that would need receiving variance also.
No. What are you referring to, Dan?
Because you're subdividing the three lots, you're establishing the, well, obviously, Jiffy Lube parcel which is Lot Number One.
Right.
You're requesting variance for that this evening. But it sounds like Lot Number Two would require variance also because of this requirement.
Lot Number Two is everything else.
I understand. But you're establishing that, and it doesn't conform to the lot area.
Lot Two over.
Oh, everything else. I'm looking at your blue lines.
I was just trying to always say that.
No, those are the original.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
So, the feeling what it is, is that if you look at the original layout of the lot, there are two lots, you know, there's a smaller lot on the corner. So, we're really bringing it more into conformity with the code. Bringing the corner lot more into conformity with the code.
You're combining all that with the Ridge Road parcel.
And we're combining it for now. Showed to me a little bit better, which now I look at, it's more confusing.
I don't, no, never mind.
At the other day, if you look at the four requests, is anything... They could carve up and make this a highly irregular shaped Lot Two to achieve the additional 7,000 square feet. Is that in the best interest of this project? Probably not.
Because of the problems down the road.
It's going to cause other variance required. The nine-foot north side setback for the house, is that really, I mean, it's internal to the property? They probably aren't going to go under a wagon and say that that thing's probably not going to sit there in another two years, right? That house is probably not even going to be there. So, does that really change our outlook on this project? The house is going to be there, right? The internal buffers, both for the east and the south, you know, they could rearrange the dumpster, they could do a few other things, but does that make this project matter? I don't think so.
Well, and the buffers are combined. So, it's 20 feet between the two parcels. We have to get 20 feet. So, if we have 1.5 feet in this parcel, there's opportunity with the rest of the development of the property to take on the remaining buffer and really make that anything. If that works for the next stage of development. It is internal to the parcel. It doesn't change, it doesn't change anything outside of that piece of property.
Too internal to their whole development. I, the last proposal I was in here, they had some objections from the residential neighbors to the south. So, I think it's to the advantage to keep that Jiffy Lube to the north as much as possible because it might push any future development on that lot to the south.
You're referring to the strip plaza that was proposed a couple of years ago? Is that what you're referring to?
Yes.
Yeah, because somebody did come in and give approval. Variance is all right, but the project didn't go through. But we had to deal with some buffer variances in the south. So, we better upkeep that Jiffy Lube lot line further to the north despite that 1.5-foot buffer setback. It left huge implications.
Any other comments or questions before we move to secret?
The only thing I, and it's really not a concern for Lot One, but it's a concern for the development and the balance of the lot, is when the previous proposal came before us, the developer had worked with the board such that the residences to the south of this, that there was enough buffering and enough buffering and protection to protect them from the impact of having a commercial intensity use. I don't know if we can condition that, and granting the Lot One, Lot Two, what you're asking for right now, that in future development, respect what the board previously approved to protect those houses to the south. We had this, yeah, just the buffering that was set up.
I think they're going to have to come back in for review or they're going to develop here and then we can take into consideration based on the previous area and see what that was.
Okay.
Right, I'll have that be in the case tonight. This is that.
I just don't mind this slated there.
Correct. So, I think it's more of an obligation of saying, upon future development of Lot Two, that we reflect back on the previous variance that was granted and take into consideration some of the special conditions that we had posed on the variance.
There was a concern that I gave, I was trying to put stop orders. If we were to ask for some sort of screening to those neighbors to the south at this point in time, because we really don't know how, you know, you want that parcel to the south. It will be heavily developed. And, yeah, 1.5 feet, I don't know if there's enough room to provide any type of, or fence, and they could provide any kind of screening to the south.
Can I talk to the provisions about the same plan?
Oh, there isn't.
Proper parcel to the south.
Well, I understand what you're saying, but it would provide immediate protection to the south, to those residents. Because we really don't know how long, what time period it will be when this parcel is going to be developed.
We're all for a, what do we, I think the Jiffy Lube building is maybe 140 feet, would you say for linear proper neighboring, single family residential line?
Correct. Yeah, this here is the 114 buffer line that they have to maintain. And then, we're going to lay a whole number four.
So, it seems to me that any buffer related to that subtly zoning line in residential neighborhood would really relate to anything that happens in the future. Which would of course be subject to, you know, approvals at that time.
That's going to make one of them. Obviously, variances when you develop Lot Two.
And the Jiffy Lube building was placed specifically to have the traffic pattern go east-west also. You know, it doesn't change what the project is, but, you know, it was done to have as little impact to the neighbors as possible.
We can, we'll come back to some further questions that's proceeding. For some time, I see our section 617 of the environmental code. We'll make a motion for type two secret. Second, all in favor?
Aye.
All right. This meeting is open to anyone wishing to speak for or against this application. That would be anybody in this room is welcome to step up to the podium and state your position. In addition to that, if you are a caller, please dial 872-7011 if you wish to speak for or against this application. Last call, anybody wishing to speak for or against this application? Okay.
Do we get any comments from the committee?
Yeah. We did receive a letter from WCAL, Webster Citizens Action League, that we will put on record with the file. Westertown Zoning Board member. The Webster Citizens Action League has a mission to advocate on behalf of the town and village residents. Zoning and planning issues have a massive impact on the lives and well-being of Webster residents. With this in mind, we strongly urge you to deny the area variances being asked for by the proposed Jiffy Lube project at the corner of Ridge and Jackson Roads. The proposed variance fails to meet five conditions set down for granting variances. The variance will have a harmful effect on the residential neighborhoods of the south of this property by adding traffic, noise, and lighting. This project is not in character with those residential areas. This is MC district, by the way, not a residential district. This applicant does not need to design this large facility. The facility, it must be remembered, required a use variance and was not anticipated to be in this zone. The variances asked for are substantial. The lot area is about 20% less. The nine-foot south setback being asked for is half that required, a 50% reduction. These substantial variances add to the impact the project will have on the area. Note that these variance requests are internal to a lot owned, which is still MC, by the same owner. These are internal variances. The traffic, lighting, and noise will all have negative effect on the adjacent residential area. The board might be fooled into consideration in considering the commercial area to the west, but with the exception of a single residence, there's a good distance between that commercial area and nearby residential areas. And a firm was constructed long ago as well as a barrier. I'm not following up. The applicant has created this hardship. They are packing too much project in too small a space. They have chosen a use that requires too much area for the lot. There are alternatives available to combine lots or find new use. The zoning conditions did not create hardship. For these reasons, WCAL urges you to deny these area variances. This project does not meet the criteria for relief. And better, more compatible projects could be constructed. Anybody care to address any of those others? I, in terms of the size of the facility, I think 3,000 square foot is much smaller than probably any other maintenance facility, auto maintenance facility in Webster. I would think unless it's a modern shop. Don, what's the size of the Monour Muffer, one of those, do we know? That'd be 7,000, 8,000 square. Do you have any data on that?
I don't. I don't, but I can tell you that the size of this facility is probably no larger than many of the other uses in MC district. Because we didn't need any setback variances for the building or any other variances that would indicate that the site does not fit the size of development.
As far as the traffic, lighting, and noise, I think the bay reduction, there's four bays total, right?
Correct.
So, I think that's not a lot of cars in and out of there.
No, actually, we discussed the number. I mean, they anticipate starting out about 15 customers a day. And I think they're target, you know, they can be great with 40. I think 30 is really the bay, you know, to make it affordable.
The other, we know because we discussed the consequence, but the other uses will have much greater impact on traffic than this. We'll put this in the file.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
So, I think you should give the public an opportunity to comment with this place new information. So, that doesn't consider the group, it has to be lengthy, but this is an opportunity to think right. And I would also recommend that we would need in the record, I believe we received it into the record at the last meeting, but we may regret it to end in a party. Woods opened a letter that spells out the difficulty in the applicant not being able to generate a reasonable return for the permitted use which is set forth in that letter, which is, I guess, financial information. Real estate is a great one to be, so, this kind of a duplicate or motion might be.
Correct. I believe we adopted that letter, both the Caliber letter dated January 22nd, 2021, and the March 8th Woods O'Geehan Hillman letter dated March 8th, 2021, for the use variance that was granted at the last meeting. We would, I think your recommendation is to adopt the March 8th and the January 22nd letter again for the record as part of the permits, correct?
Correct.
Yeah. Yeah, so, we haven't closed the public portion because I just read the letter. So, the public portion is still open. So, I'll just give it one last call, 872-7011, if you would like to speak for or against this application. I also received an online comment that I can read whenever you guys are ready. Read it out? No, just, oh, it's just, okay, this was the printed copy? Gotcha. Yep, I will read this as well. This is from Richard Bronken at 960 Everwood Run. The intersection of Jackson and Ridge Roads is a busy intersection. Are any plans being made to address traffic that this business will create? I see on the site plan the entry and exits for Ridge Road side of the business. Are any entry and or exits planned for Jackson Lane? It appears there is one. If there is such an exit, make a left turn onto Jackson should be prohibited. In fact, the whole idea of an entry-exit onto Jackson should not be allowed. It just makes sense. Conny, I would want to do that and make the reference.
I can say that the planning board had reviewed a concept plan before we, before we came here tonight. Before we made the voting board application, they did review the concept plan. I don't think they had any issues with the, with the driveway access. I personally was not at that meeting. Jerry Boulton was totally dependent on that one.
I just like to point out, if any of you have been by Starbucks, or Wendy's, or McDonald's, which are a lot of uses on this corner. Cars are wrapped around those buildings at lunchtime. The traffic generation is astronomical. This is a much, much lighter traffic generation than the past new restaurant, which would be a lot of noise. So, I don't think the traffic is an issue.
And once again, there, I think you told us 15 hours is their expected, you know, occupancy as they're on startup.
Yeah, they expect, you know, 30 a day is what it's going to be.
At full ramp?
At full ramp up, they start, you cannot wait.
And that would be addressed by the planning board in regard?
This is a very low traffic generator.
You can, you can tell by, there's nowhere to queue up and back up traffic like at a Dunkin' Donuts or a Chick-fil-A where you run into traffic going down the road. I think the lot size keeps it moving.
We're going to close off the public portion of the meeting and return the discussion back to the board. Any further comments or questions for the afternoon? The last meeting was, what's the date of last meeting?
March 23rd?
23rd. You'd also, I'd also propose that we adopt the discussion because we did discuss these variances as well prior to, to next meeting, if we adopt those variances, finals or any determination made this evening on April 13th. Anyone care to proceed with finals? Or is everybody fine adopting the March 8th, 2021 letter from Woods O'Geehan?
The only thing that's changed really is we addressed the buffers. I think the board agrees that those buffers are internal to the project. And whoever buys that Lot Two is going to have, is going to be commercial MC anyways. So, they're going to have to deal with it at that point. It doesn't really affect anybody else.
And I think the only other thing that I would add is that if we, you know, if they tried to seek the additional 7, 7, 8,000 square feet, as Don pointed out, we're going to create additional variances no matter what we do. There's, this plan provides a balance. Okay, so, I would make a recommendation that we adopt the March 8th, 2021 letter where it is discussed the related area variances and all items of the five standards by address. Plus, in addition to our discussion, and the March 23rd, 2021. Okay, with that said, I will make a motion to grant an area variance for Jiffy Lube located at 1161 and 1171 Ridge Road and 974 Jackson Road. Applicant Guggenheim Development Services LLC, which would include the following area variances. A lot area of 36,537 square feet where a minimum of 45,000 square feet is required. A nine-foot north side setback for a house at 974 Jackson Road where 20 feet is required. A 1.5-foot south side setback, side buffer area where 20 feet is required. A 15-feet-foot east rear buffer area where 25-foot is required. Associated with the construction of a 3,000-square-Jiffy Lube Auto Care Shop on proposed .84 acre parcel consisting of SPL numbers 080.13-2-1, 080.13-2-2, and 080.13-2-52. Located in an MC medium intensity commercial district under Section 225-17 of the town of Webster, of the Code of the Town of Webster.
Mr. Newtown? Mr. Newtown?
Aye.
Mr. Warren?
Aye.
Mrs. Bowler?
Aye.
Mr. Housen?
Aye.
Mr. Stafford?
Aye.
Okay, a few conditions applied. Must obtain all of our governmental permits, including prime building permits, and any other sign permits that may be needed in the future. And one year, may construction be set to expire one year from this evening. I'm assuming you've got another trip back to the planning board, obviously, correct?
Yes.
Final approvals? And anything that I'm missing? Good? Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thanks.